All right, everybody's here, so let's call the February 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission to Order, and let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bentley, please call the ball.
Joe? John Hardy?
Here.
Vice Chair Upfield?
Here.
Numzio?
Here.
Jasper Shudo?
Here.
Dan Spataforo?
Here.
Spataforo, I'm sorry. Mr. Oliver?
Here.
And Mr. Bentley is here, all present in the conference.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from January 19th, 2021. I hope everybody had the intended agenda that was sent out today. There were some grammatical mistakes, I believe, more than anything.
Yep, they were very minor, but yes, they were sent out this afternoon.
Okay. So if you looked at those, we have a motion to accept the minutes.
Yep, there's no further discussion.
Motion by Mr. Spataforo. Seconded by Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bentley, just call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just brief discussion on that. I did not see the, I did not see it rich, just grammatically, grammatical like you said.
Yes, they were grammatical and a name, Dan Spataforo's membership name wasn't there. Minor stuff, and it all were picked up.
Okay, very good, just want to make sure because I had not seen it. Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
Spataforo made a motion, and Mr. Bentley seconded it. Please call the roll.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provozano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay, next we have the approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, no additions, leations or corrections. I make motion to accept the agenda as read.
Motion by Mr. Shudo?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley?
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provozano?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. And Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Okay. Under new business tonight, we have site plan, S A F E S T O R 23, permanent parcel number 08201018, located on the south side of 23 mile road, approximately a quarter mile west of Romeo Plank, of Safe Store Real Estate Company LLC petition. We'll start with you, Mr. Box.
Thank you, Chairman Hardy. So as you mentioned, this is Safe Store. You have the site plan this evening, and I would like to point out first that the overall area and this unit both are part of consent judgments, longstanding consent judgments that predate myself actually being with the township. The consent judgment's already approved, the building height, design, location, and use through the court system, so the access to the property was approved and established by the planning commission through the Elite Corporate Park Site Plan that was approved earlier in late 2020. So the planning commission's responsibility for this project this evening is to review primarily the parking and landscaping requirements for this development. So that being said, the development, which is a three-story self-storage facility, is located on the south side of 23 mile west of Romeo Plank, in the Elite Corporate Park, industrial park. All departments have reviewed, and the comments are in your packet. The second amendment to the consent judgment, which allows for front yard loading, personal table, board of trust, January 27th, so that's another thing I wanted to note. And petition, I believe, should be, should you have any questions for them?
Okay, point of order, Mr. Chairman, may I say something, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Spataforo.
For this agenda, item in the interests of full disclosure and to avoid any appearance of impropriety and partiality, please be advised that I will recuse myself from discussion and voting on any motion for this agenda item for the reason that I am employed by Landtech Companies, of which Elite Sports Ventures LLC is the legal owner of the property in question is one of the Landtech companies.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. All right, is the petitioner in the audience?
I can mute and...
Hey, I am looking for...
I'm John Williams. I'm one of the owners of Safe Store.
All right, please state your name and address for me, please.
John Williams, 212 Marion Drive, Athens, Georgia, 30606.
Okay, anything you'd like to share?
No, sir, we just really appreciate the staff working with us and helping us get on this agenda tonight, and I think we've identified and addressed all the comments that need to be addressed to move this project forward. We look forward to bringing Safe Store to your community.
All right, thank you. Are there questions from our commissioners? Mr. Bentley?
I have a couple. Mr. Chairman, thank you. As was mentioned by Mr. Box as well, that the consent agreement has agreed to dock areas on the roadside and front yard, basically. But I noticed that if this is truck dock area for both, what the north and the south docks, it would, it would be difficult to back in a truck. I'm not sure what size trucks are being used, but also it would, with any size truck, would probably block the entry during that maneuvering time. And then also, I'm not sure if it's all, it'll be corrected later, but the ramps tackle warnings come down. I would have to say as well, in response to some of the comments, it indicated that the consent judgment on Carlisle Wortman report, it indicated that unless the planning commission determines that a site location will be adequately screened and will not interrupt circulation patterns or cause traffic conflicts. And I guess I observe or would be concerned about both of those issues. There is no screening, and it may cause traffic conflicts for these loading areas. So I make those as observations, and since we don't have the exact wording of the consent judgment, I'm not sure where to go from there unless we had some specific direction because of this item one under, under the Carlisle Wortman review kind of indicates that unless there was screening and there was no problems with the parking, it would be acceptable and it would meet the requirements of the consent agreement. So that's all I had.
All right. Mr. Skurdo?
Yes.
Address that.
The site plan that Mr. Bentley refers to was approved by consent judgment. The engineer, township engineer, did look at that, and he also remarked on that consent, and it was approved. The one note that we asked is the site plan should be noted as the landscape area being sodded and also have underground irrigation installed. We didn't see that note on the site plan, but they'd ask be included. As Mr. Box put, pointed out, this is a consent judgment been going on, predates me also, and it's already been through the courts and approved. Our plan, our review actually predates that approval.
Mr. Williams, did you have anything else you'd like to comment on?
Well, a couple, couple of things. I certainly appreciate the comments and the concern about that, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, our second consent judgment addressed also the truck sizes and restrictions on sizes that can be allowed to be put in there, which would, I believe, is what led to the engineer determining that there wouldn't be any issues with traffic or movement through the site. What I can tell you in our experience, I mean, we own, we have 31 of these buildings, 15 in operation right now, and 95% of all our traffic, if they are trucks at all, are the box truck, kind of the UPS sized trucks. Here, we've got the order to not exceed that. And just for clarification for the commission as well, the reference to a loading dock is not, is not accurate from a visualization standpoint. These are not loading docks. They are simply a very aesthetically pleasing sliding glass door situation whereby a box truck can back up to do that and unload. So they're not the docks that you perceive in like a, you know, behind a Walmart or something like that. It's at grade unloading for that kind of lower, lower base box truck.
Thank you. Other commissioners?
We don't have any issues at all with the condition about the landscape and then underground intention, underground irrigation.
Anybody else?
What about the screening? Did you address that? That was, that was brought up, screening?
The screening, okay. Mr. Williams?
Or his item number one under findings?
Yeah, or Mr. Skurdo, item number one under findings?
I believe that the screening has been addressed through those consent judgments as well, and we're planning, if you, our site plans that we've submitted to address the sodding, the landscape areas, and the trees that'll be planted along the street, as well as shrubbery that's planted adjacent in the islands next to the loading areas. So I think that we've adequately addressed that, and it's been, the consent judgment has found this to be in compliance with what needs to be.
Yeah, the engineer did look at site restrictions and things before he commented on this amendment to the consent judgment.
Thank you, Mr. Skurdo, thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else with questions? Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, you could.
Question of Mr. Skurdo. I know you've mentioned this in your review, and I think you've said it more tonight, but I just want to make sure I'm clear on this because I want to make sure we, I walk the correct line here when I'm asking questions. What does the consent judgment not cover?
Consent judgment, it was the number of parking spaces and the landscaping.
Okay.
Everything with the building, access, truck size, like says, it's really limited on truck size, and waste storage was covered by the consent judgment.
Okay, because we have some comments in here with regard, from Building Department with regards to access. I had some questions with regards to the, to the waste on the outside or being moved inside. I have questions on them, again, if that's not, if that's something that's already covered by the consent judgment, obviously, that's not within our purview.
I can comment if you like to, I can comment on what the waste storage will be, based on the consent, if you like.
I was primarily interested in what the petitioner was using it for and why it was going to be acceptable inside, which you might be able to cover, and if you can, that's fine, otherwise that was the question.
Yeah, the way the building was laid out, we had concerns about where they wanted to put the dumpster, would have been the front yard, and we expressed our concerns as part of that amendment. The petitioner at that point decided to do what they originally did was the, they'd have a rolling container be inside the building, and so the day that a truck comes, they roll it out, so they got a time constraint of no longer than 24 hours can that waste receptacle be on the outside of the building before it has to be pulled back in.
The other question I had, and obviously, this is limited in scope, I'm not sure if this would fall within our purview or not, but if you recall, we had an issue with a, I think you would have reviewed this as well, we had an issue with an industrial building several months ago at ZBA and the placements of air conditioning units. I don't know if this would be a landscaping issue because I'm not sure where these are placed. I know in that, in that other case, actually, we talked about this with that, that storage unit, that they did not want to put them on the roof, which then brought them down onto the site plan, and it became a landscape and setback issue. I don't see them on the drawing, but obviously, we have a less than complete drawing for other reasons. Are you familiar with how those are being handled, and are, is that within the variable that is not the consent judgment at the moment?
I do not recall seeing that either and commenting on that. Maybe the applicant can step in and explain where that is. I don't remember seeing that in the consent judgment being addressed either.
Mr. Williams?
Go ahead. I mean, our units are on the roof, our handlers are on the roof.
Okay. And that is, and that is noted somewhere in drawing. And Mr. Williams, just, just so that you're aware and have some background on this, I sit on the ZBA as well, I'm a crossover member. We had a storage company that came in, and the units, air conditioning units were not on the original plan that we approved at the planning commission. They were not brought before the ZBA, and then they installed them, I believe, in the front yard, which goes against ordinance.
Well, I can assure you, there will be nothing installed in the front yard, Mr. Tuckfield, that, no question about that. Almost exclusively, our units are on the roof, and typically, we don't get quite that far along at this stage as far as designing all our MEPs 100%, but I don't think we have any issues, not encroaching in any setbacks, and my prediction is that they'll be 100% on the roof, but in no way, shape, or form will they be in the front yard. Look, we want to make this to be the best looking storage facility that you guys have ever seen. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, we spent extra money on architecture, on the design of it, and, and, you know, at the end of the, you know, we can, I can honestly say that, you know, we really want to do an aesthetically pleasing building from the street here.
Well, and I appreciate that, Mr. Williams, and we certainly are happy to have you within the township, and we see people on a regular, a regular basis, and we're happy to have you here. I just want to make sure that you're aware of it, that the planning staff is aware of it, and just to comment to you, I'm not entirely sure where it's falling in this case. Normally, I'd like to see it after the experience I've had, I'd like to see it in the site plan, obviously, this is a little bit different than normal, but just a comment, if you put the unit somewhere besides the roof, please be in close touch with the staff as to where you locate them. Yeah, it was, it was not a great situation last time we ran into it, so I just want to make sure.
No, no problem at all, we'll do that. And I know that we also got us, I mean, we're going to be addressing some of these comments that staff had and submitting a final site plan as well, so they'll, they'll give, they'll get to see that, you know.
Okay, very good. I appreciate it, Mr. Williams, thank you, Mr. Skurdo, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Anyone else? This time, do we open it to the public, Josh? We should.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to add, I had a clock here, well, here we go, at 7:20, we're going to open the public, is there anyone that wants to speak? Mr. Box?
I'd like to speak, raise your hand with, it's a star nine, I believe, and, or if you're in the Zoom meeting, you can virtually raise your hand. I am not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Okay. All right.
I take that back, here, there is one. Rachel, go ahead.
Hi. Hi, we are Rachel Battle Lamenti, 17, 500, 23 mile road. We have the Salvino and Sons Foam Factory building next door. We have a similar concern to one that, that I hear a little bit, and perhaps it's addressed by consent judgment, but it's not something that we've seen. We have on the same side that this new building is going on about 30 large semi-trucks that pull in to that, that's, you know, executive drive there. They pull in and they use those west docks of our building. We're concerned about the traffic, you know, we're concerned about interruption of that, that roadway, and we're also concerned about, you know, the, the ability of emergency vehicles. That was a big issue that, that we had when we moved into the building, is that they wanted to make sure that there was never any delay for emergency vehicles to get all the way around our site. And so we just want to make sure that those things are, are being considered and recognized with respect to this property, and that we don't have a problem going forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Box or Mr. Skurdo, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, what I'll say is the executive driver, I believe, the way Foam Factory right now, it is more of a driveway on the west side of their building. This elite complex will be installing an actual roadway to get to the parcels that are in the rear of the complex. So the driveway that currently exists would be removed for the roadway to be installed, which would be significantly wider than what exists right now. So I would not envision traffic congestion by any means.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask just for a clarification?
Absolutely.
If Ms. Battle Lamenti could clarify her relationship with the neighboring parcel again, I didn't catch, catch who she was or where she was coming from.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm the corporate attorney for Foam Victory, I'm also the daughter-in-law of the owner. And then the only other issue that, that I would ask to be addressed, and again, it might be in the consent judgment, but we haven't seen it, is initially, when this development was being discussed, there was a question about storm sewer water and dumping that into the pond that connected to our property. We, we did not end up agreeing to that, and so I want to make sure that that's being addressed with regard to landscaping and, you know, the drives that are being installed and things.
Mr. Box, did you want to comment?
I am not aware of any storm sewer concerns, but I know all of that was looked at as part of the elite complex as a whole, the industrial park. And they are actually working towards engineering, they're going to be in the engineering phase as we speak, so I assume things such as that will be addressed in the engineering phase.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Mrs., or Ms. Bella Lamenti?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Box?
I do not see any other hands raised.
All right. It's now 7:24. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Support.
Mr. Shudo made the motion, Mr. Tuckfield supported it, and Mr. Bentley, please call the ball.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforo?
I'm staying.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Provozano?
Yes.
I believe that's it.
Okay, motion passes.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I think I was just closing the public portion.
Oh, yeah. Motion passes to close the public portion, thank you. Now, do we have a motion to approve the site plan for Safe Store number 22, 23?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to make the motion, I just want to make one, one quick question for Josh before that and one quick note. Josh, are we expecting to see the subdivision itself back for another level of review? I forget where we're at with that.
Yeah, I believe after their engineering plan, that will be back for the final review.
Okay. And just the comment would be, Ms. Battle Lamenti spoke earlier, and I would encourage her to attend that meeting, I think that might be a good place for some questions, and I know at the first meeting with regards to this, which would have been October of last year, there were some questions about how the two sites interfaced, I think would be useful for us. I know I had multiple questions on how they interfaced if both users, the user and the neighbor was there. So to Ms. Battle Lamenti, please, please come back for that meeting, please watch the schedule, I think it would be good for you and good for us for you to be there. That being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the site plan for Safe Store 23, permanent parcel 0820100018. Safe Store Real Estate LLC is the petitioner, and this approval will be based upon the recommendations by our staff and passing the applicable criteria that remains after considering those items that are taken care of within consent judgment.
Court? Motion made by Mr. Tuckfield, supported by Mr. Oliver? Mr. Bentley?
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Provozano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforo?
I'm staying.
Excuse? Okay, and Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. On to the next item, preliminary. I'm sorry, what was that?
I just said, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, Mr. Williams. All right, the next item, preliminary plan for Corona Park Site condominium, permanent parcel 0805100021, located on the south side of 26 mile road, east of Romeo Plank Road, section five, Salvatore Di Mercio, I hope I said that correct, petition. Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hardy. So Corona Park is a residential development located on the south side of 26 miles from Romeo Plank. This is section five of the township. Property is just over six and a half acres, and they are proposing a 12-unit residential development. This development will connect via Pienza Drive to the neighboring development, which is Villapalmado, and it'll also connect out to 26 mile via Corona Drive. All the town departments have reviewed the plans and have provided the comments that were included in your packet, and I do believe that the petitioner is available for questions or they may wish to make a presentation, I'm not sure.
Okay. Mr. Di Mercio, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yes, I Salvatore Di Mercio, address 56096, L'Oreal Court. I'm here on behalf of my father, and our engineer, Bill Thompson, with Laner Associates is here on our behalf and can answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Petitioners? Questions? The commissioners? Yes. Commissioners, did they say petitioners?
I thought so, but maybe I'm wrong.
Commissioners? Any questions?
I had a question, Mr. Chairman, oh, I think, Mr. Bentley, did you have one? You might have said, you might have said it first, go ahead.
Well, don't fight it.
Mr. Chairman, I had one question, or two questions, actually, and regarding lot three that's shown on the plan, there is a concern, at least on my part, if that lot is too deep related to the notes on the right-hand side of the drawing as far as maximum lot ratio, three to one depth to width. I don't, I can't read the dimensions. As I pull in, it just gets blurry here, so that was just one concern, so we don't have any technical issues in the future. And I wanted to confirm that in those lots four, one through four, that the dimension, I believe it's a dimension, I can't really tell, or a lot split, but I believe there's a dimension in the center of each of these lots, but I, if you could clarify that too. So two items, the depth of lot, depth to width meets the ratio requirements in lot three, as well as clarification on what appears to be a dimension line in the center of lots, or if that's really two lots or split. That's all I have.
Chairman? Mr. Chairman? If I may, the dimensions that Mr. Bentley is referring
If I may, the dimensions that, uh, Mr. Bentley is referring to are actually the lot depths a- as they are measured according to the requirements. And, uh, the maximum depth will be two hundred and ten feet, and none of them exceed the two hundred and ten feet.
So, on a shaped lot, uh, a tropical, uh, shape, then that dimension uh, doesn't, uh, the depth of the lot doesn't have to go to that longest, uh, corner?
No, but. No, it doesn't.
Is it an average? Needs to be an average?
Actually, the dimension is, uh, based on the distance, connecting the line between the back two corners and the, and, uh, the front two corners and measuring that distance. So, when a pie shaped lot like this, it doesn't go to the very back corner. It's where the sideline intercepts the rear line.
Okay. Um, sir, I'm not sure who you are.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Thompson from Laner Associates. My address is one seven zero zero one nineteen Mall Road, Suite Three, Clinton Township, four eight oh three six.
And you are representing?
I'm representing, uh, Mr. Di Mercio.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Tuck?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, I'm not sure if this will be to Mr. Boxer, Mr. Skurdo, but on Mr. Skurdo's, uh, review, uh, it notes, um, some inconsistencies with the drawing as far as acreage, um, and as far as, uh, feet, I believe it was on this one. There was also, I think that actually might be the only two things, but I was wondering, Mr. Skurdo, have those been addressed on this current drawing, or is that an older?
Yes. That review that's dated January thirteenth refers to an earlier review. Um, uh, we've had a number of meetings with Mr. Thompson to go over the engineer and the planning, to make sure the dimensions were all proper and in place. And I, our review at that point states that there were two items based on an earlier meeting, and th- those are our catches, and Mr. Thompson corrected uh, those items. So, as of right now, all the lot dimensions are met.
So, do you know, just so that when we go to approve these or approving the right site plan, do you know the date of the correct, uh, the correct plan that we should be approving? I'm not sure if we have the correct one in front of us. Just want to make sure we're approving it.
Oh, geez, mine's so small. I got, man, Mr. Thompson, would you have the bigger one? I got a page size one I'm trying to read. My eyes aren't what they used to be.
My drawing is just about as serious. I believe it's, uh, oh, one oh six, twenty twenty-one, in the revision block.
So, and thank you, Mr. Thompson. So, Mr. Skurdo, if, if we're, if we're approving it and we might not have this drawing in our packet, it would be appropriate then to approve the plan dated one six twenty-one? Would that be?
Yeah, absolutely correct. Oh, yeah, it's a standard practice. He had, you, you, you approve the dated plan that you like.
I know it's something I was told in a couple of my classes, and I don't always do it, but it was, it was catching.
Yes, it's a good practice, because you can imagine the number of plans we get in front of us back and forth through revisions.
Yep. Um, along those lines, and I, and I was flipping through my pages trying to find this, I believe there is also, uh, a note from the assessing department that I assume is referencing some of the same issues. Would you believe that's corrected as well? So, the note, they say the east property line varies from the assessing records. Uh, that, the plan indicates a partially split off, which would require a land division application. Um, are you familiar with that at all?
I am looking at that right now.
I have a follow-up question to Mr. Tuckfield on that one.
I don't have that answer. Looking for Carols.
Yeah, if you actually look, uh, Mr. Tuckfield, if you look at, uh, read through that, at the bottom, it says a land division application.
Oh, with assessing.
That's dated, that's actually from email dated January fifth, at eleven fifty-four AM. Earlier in the packet, you see also dated January fifth at three twenty-nine PM, so later in the day, uh, they.
The, the, it's been approved, okay, or filed. Thank you, Mr. Boxer.
Mr. Spatafora? And my follow-up question to Mr. Tuckfield, seeing that that land division application was filed, this would be to Mr. Di Mercio Thompson, do you know the status? Have you heard back from assessing yet? As to the status of your lot split or land division application?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, sir.
The assessor has asked for the right-of-way on Twenty-Six Mile Road to be dedicated. And, um, one other thing. Oh, asked for an abeyance on the sidewalk across the parcel until the construction is done. The application for abeyance has been submitted. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Van Tiflin has, uh, formed a letter, Mr. Di Mercio signed the letter and returned it to the township. Uh, we've made this a middle to the road commission to dedicate the hundred and two-foot right-of-way for Twenty-Six Mile Road. Uh, tha- that's not a one-day process. Uh, that, that'll take a few weeks to happen, because the board actually has to approve it, the, the board of road commissioners. So, that has been initiated, and everything is on its way.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Are there any other, um, concerns from the planning commission? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public. At seven thirty-seven, Mr. Box, is there anyone that would like to speak?
Anyone who wishes to speak, please, uh, virtually raise your hand through Zoom or press star nine on your phone if you are dialed in.
And while we're waiting, uh, please make sure you give us your name and your address. And if there's more than one person, we will answer all the questions to the best of our ability at the end.
I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Okay, then it is seven thirty, and I'd like to close the public portion of the segment. And do I have a, a motion to do so?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Spatafora made the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Mr. Shudo seconded it? Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provasano?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing is approved. Um, do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question first, if I could.
Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield?
Don't really want to drag this out too much, but I just want to make sure I understand this. And I, I was not following the assessing, uh, letter, or had not followed it in my review, so apologize for that. But it's, it's noting, um, that the line to the east is not correct, and it needs to be split. Is, so is this parcel not split from the adjoining subdivision to the east that's under development? So, I understand what's this, what, what's going on with this, and this might be to Mr. Boxer, Mr. Skurdo, or it might be to Mr. Thompson. Just want to make sure I'm following what's going on with that.
This has always been a separate parcel from the subdivision piece.
Okay.
Of Villapomato. Uh, any boundary descriptions could refer about, just be the difference between ours, between our survey and the township records.
Oh, where, what's the, what's the parcel that's being split, then?
The parcel's being split is where the existing house is, in the northwest corner.
Okay. Bear with me for just a moment here. Just want to make sure I'm understanding this, this note, and I, I did not, so I apologize. Let me get back to it. Because on the note from the assessor, there might be two separate things. Um, oh, I believe it is two separate things. It's noting, and my apologies for not having fully read this, I believe, and Mr. Box, if you can check me on this. Believe it's noting that the east property line varies from the assessing records, but during the property split, there would be a, a new certified survey, which would then correct the, the differential, uh, if, if I'm reading that correct.
Yes.
So, I think I understand it better. My apologies, but thank you, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Box, for helping me, helping me understand that. I, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I made that motion.
Okay, Mr. Oliver made the motion to approve the area plan for Portona Park Site Condominiums. Somebody seconded? Send you, Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora seconded. Mr. Bentley?
Hey, um, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Uh, I have a question, if I could, and I apologize. I do have one question before I vote, uh, to Mr. Aloya, and I don't know if this would change anything. Mr. Aloya, I just noted that the, the, the line to the east apparently is not accurate to the drawing. Are we okay voting on this since the, the updated survey has not been applied, uh, and the, the drawing that we're voting to approve might potentially be incorrect? Are we okay leaving that as a, as a, a piece to be done later?
Believe it's a, it's a condition, as long as the condition is met, and it's a condition, then you can vote.
Okay, very good.
I'll amend my motion to add that as a condition. Okay.
I, I appreciate it, Mr. Oliver.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Yes, thank Mr. Lloyd. And thank, thank you, Mr. Hardy. Sorry for, sorry for the, uh, confusion, but with that, uh, with that change, I would vote in support, yes.
Okay. We should call the board again to make sure we have it right.
So, dude?
Go ahead.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provasano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mercio, I said it wrong again, and I'm sorry. Okay, Mercio? All right, la- last item for tonight on your new business is the final plan for Milano Industrial Site Condominium. Permanent parcel zero eight one eight four zero 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 one four, located on the north side of Twenty-Three Mile Road, west of Romeo Plank, section eighteen, Leoni Construction, petition. We have, um, we'll start with you, Mr. Box.
Uh, yeah, I'm actually going to turn this one over to, uh, Mr. Skurdo, but before I do, I do, I did want to point out, uh, in your packet, if you look at the development map, the area that's highlighted in yellow, you see that it's essentially a large parcel at this point. Uh, and then when you look at the drawings, they're, uh, broken out into units. This is a site condo, an industrial site condo. Uh, so, there's some questions before we get started tonight about why there are no drawings and buildings. Uh, they are essentially breaking up this larger parcel into units for when each unit is developed in the future, then that's when you will see building footprints and parking lots and things of that nature. So, just wanted to point that out.
So, is, it, would this be considered final design?
No, thi- this is the, the, the final site plan.
Or final plan, I should.
Final plan for the condo itself.
Okay.
Uh, but then each unit will then come forward with their own site plan. I'll put that, Dave, I'll let you take it from here.
One more question from Mr. Box.
Yes.
And each unit is separate from the other, or they're not connected?
They're, they're separate, yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Skurdo?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
This is a quick group, the, the quiet, didn't quite get everything coming through. What was the question?
Well, I, we were just turning it over to you to, to discuss, uh, Milano Industrial.
Okay. Yeah, this is the tail end of a um, site condominium development. This is, they're in for final approval. It's a recommendation by the planning commission to township board. Um, what they're doing is taking Milano Drive, they're connecting it to an extension of Leoni Drive, which goes from east to west. It is an important street connection as it completes the circulation pattern and, uh, good for emergency access. As it connects to the developments to the east and west, and the fire department prefers that. We are in looking at the final, uh, plans. Um, they've so far met all engineering standards. There will be a series of detailed pre-construction engineering prior to approval by staff. It's an administrative approval. Tonight, uh, we checked on lot sizes, the unit sizes are all met. Um, as in terms of individual lot designs, you see eight lots. Each of those will be a separate site plan that will have to come in front of the commission at some point for approval. So, Roy, tonight, what you're, uh, looking at is the layout of the streets, layout of the lots. Um, there is a six-foot screen wall along the north border, as well as a row of landscaping that meets zoning requirements. And, um, I'm going to end right there. I can take some questions at this point.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, just one question to Mr. Skurdo, and this is, uh, information potentially for anybody who's listening in. Uh, the proper time for screening requirements is at the point of site plan when each building is being developed. Is that accurate?
Uh, correct. In this case, they have, as part of the site condominium, they are putting a screen wall in place and meet zoning that happens occasionally. Um, and once in a while, if they don't put it in, as each individual site comes, we will, uh, make sure screening is addressed. The developer in this case is addressing it upfront.
Is addressing the wall and the landscape buffer?
Yes.
Okay, and I see it here in the drawing. Very good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Skurdo.
Okay.
Just a follow-up to that, Mr. Skurdo?
Yes.
So, when, let's say, unit three, when someone purchases that you, that property, and they build their facility, the screening, the wall, everything will be up. They, they don't have to deal with that.
According to this plan here, yes, it'll be up. And that's what you're approving. You're approving this plan, and the wall will be up.
But they're going to come in with a site plan of just the, the building itself.
Correct. That's what we're, that's what we're, um, looking at right now, is the, in terms of the plans that were submitted. If anything changes along the way, then we'll address it.
But we'll have no chance of, uh, a mismatched law, I would say.
Um.
It's going to be in.
No, I understand where you're coming from, no.
Yeah, all right, that's, that's the way I prefer it. I think everyone's on the right idea with that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Spatafora?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Skurdo. In the periphery, uh, you have, uh, proposed landscaping on the site plan, where it looks like from uh, units three and four, it jogs a little bit, where units five and six.
Yes.
Proposed landscaping. In the back of units five and six, you have, uh, it depicted as Milano Park. You happen to know, uh, is that just an area of green space, or, uh?
That's, actually, that is, I believe, it's an underground sewer easement. It's an easement of some sort, because we had some discussion early on, where they had landscaping along the wall. We had to have moved the landscaping back out of the easement, according to the engineer.
And that was a condition probably from the township where no landscaping was going to be placed within, um, an underground, uh, utility easement?
That's a requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bentley?
As a follow-up to, uh, Mr. Spatafora's question, um, in lots three and four, along that, uh, landscaped area, um, there is a, a dashed line. I can't read it, and there is a dimension. Um, if, if that is in fact a, an easement, um, I, I didn't see anything that I could read, uh, that indicates it's an easement. But is that dashed line that goes through units three and four part of, uh, an underground utility, or is that uh, part of the easement? And if it is part of the easement, uh, uh, it's, it's, I'm not understanding, I guess, the job anymore, because that goes clear across all four units. And, uh, it's just the landscaping and the depth of the lots that has changed. So, um, I'm not sure what that has to do with, uh, the easement for utilities.
If I can answer that question, I really don't have a clear answer. I, so I'm looking at the dash line you're speaking about, Mr. If I can answer that question, I really don't have a clear answer. I, so I'm looking at the dash line you're speaking about, Mr. Bentley. And I don't have a clear answer what that is. We can always check with the engineer to see if there's an easement back there.
It it appears it's dimensioned uh that to that dash line.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
Uh, off the back of unit five, uh, the property line off of unit five. Um. So, is it, is maybe the required or the jog in the landscaping is because the lots are deeper and the landscape you wanted to be done before those lots are developed? Uh, and therefore they had to stay off the property. It's not really related to an easement.
Yeah, I'm looking at the drawing. I believe that easement only goes behind five and six. I'm looking at a dashed line that appears to be an underground utility. It looks like it goes about midway behind unit five. Then it crosses into the subdivision to the north and it continues down. So, I'm only taking, I'm not an engineer. I'm only taking educated guess at the the easement actually only goes behind lots five and six, and that's why we have the jog.
Uh, i- if that's, if that's the case, then the dashed line and that jogged line you just mentioned are the boundaries of the easement and uh landscaping is in it for three and four.
Yeah.
We have clarification, uh, I think is is unless somebody can read the drawings.
Mr. Chairman, the Mr. To Mr. uh Bentley at the, I guess it'd be the east end adjacent to where that dash line is, it does say uh something that looks like dedicated common area, green belt landscape common area. Which makes sense. I believe that'd be twenty feet across the back of the line. Look all the way to the east in lot three. That's what I had, I had looked through it. That's what I thought it was.
The dedicated common area?
Yeah.
That's for the landscape uh of the common area. There is another just below that though, but I don't know, thirty-inch private easement for
Municipal utilities.
And and if that's the case.
Mm-hmm.
It's pointing north of that dash line, so.
So, twenty versus thirty would be.
And we have landscaping in that, that uh municipal uh easement. If I, if if that, if I'm reading it correctly. It says it's thirty feet.
Mm-hmm.
And and that would take it all the way back to the other property line.
Yeah, it looks to me like the the uh private easement for municipal utilities is thirty feet, the first twenty of which they're using uh as the dedicated common areas. So, the the buffer between the property behind them.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and you put landscaping in that easement?
I don't know that they're showing landscaping in there. They're just showing the first twenty feet of the thirty-foot easement is what they're counting as their buffer.
The other one is a twenty-foot dedicated uh common area, and that one is thirty. The scale doesn't look right, so. Some says it's wider than the other, and yet it looks.
But.
So.
Commissioner's not here, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Box?
I did not see them, no.
Yeah.
Was he on or? No. I don't see.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open it. Are you, are you good, Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I I guess my question is still out there. Um. But that's fine. Uh. We're definitely here.
Okay, all right. At this time, I'd like to open the public. It is seven fifty-six. Um, if there's anyone that would like to speak, please, if you, please give us your name and your address. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Box. Is there anyone that would like to talk tonight?
Yep, if there's anyone who would like to speak, please uh virtually raise your hand or press star nine on your phone if you are dialed in.
Okay. Then we can go ahead and close the public portion.
What's the time?
Seven fifty-seven. And Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Provozano.
Yes.
Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Spatafor.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
And Mr. Bentley, yes.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing is, is it that? Um, is there a motion for the final plan for Milano Industrial Site Condominium?
There's no further discussions. Chair, I'll move uh to uh approve the final plan of Milano Industrial Site Condominium. Um, as presented by our uh planner and discussion this evening.
Support, Mr. Spatafor, supported by Mr. Tuckfield. And Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Spatafor.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, no. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Provozano.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if if I could, could we have Mr. Provozano verify his vote? I I wasn't able to hear it accurately. I don't know.
There we go.
It was a yes, Mr. Mr. Provozano?
Yeah, probably yes, yes, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, motion passes six to. Thank you. Now, on to old business, Mr. Box.
Uh, we have no old business at this time.
Okay. Public comments on non-agenda items. Remember, you have four minutes, and if you would like to speak, just give us your name and your address.
Anyone who wishes to speak, uh, press star nine on your phone if you're dialed in or virtually raise your hand through Zoom.
Remember, this is non-agenda items.
I am not seeing any hands raised at this time.
All right, then we'll close the uh public comments and move on to commissioners' comments.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to bring it up to board. I'd like to review our bylaws. It's before the next meeting. Are we take a look at them? To see if we need any changes in them. Usually, we do that when we uh elect officers and this year, our Zoom meetings and things like that. I think we should look at them the next meeting and see if we need any update or changes in them. So, Mr. Chairman.
Can you get those to us, Mr. Box?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and you want else? What else?
Mr. Chairman, I actually did have, I did have one, um, and this would be uh just something for for Mr. Box and and Mr. Aloya, I guess, to talk about. Uh, we had an issue, or not an issue, but we had an item in front of us this evening that um referred to a consent judgment. Um, and consent judgments are something that I've always um. I've never been clear on consent judgments. Um, we see things at the planning commission. It leaves the planning commission. Something happens. We may hear about it. We may not. Um, there is an appropriate, obviously, role for the planning commission to play when it's spelled out, and there's times when there's not an appropriate role. Um, but what I'd like to see, we have a new planner, we have a new a new legal team. If you guys can talk about any methods for us to maybe be um to understand more when they happen. I know sometimes we'll see an item in front of us that has a consent judgment associated with it, and I don't know where it's been. I don't know what's appropriate for us to look at, and um it can, it can be very um uh disconcerting sometimes. And and sometimes we'll see buildings that, for lack of a better term, they appear, and we're not used to seeing those happen without us knowing about them. So, I don't know what the appropriate mechanism is. I'm sure there's a line that 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 you can tell us about and a line that you can't. But if there's some way where we can be kept up to date on things as they happen, um, in somewhat of a formal way, I I'd be interested in knowing if there's a way. If if there's not, I understand that there's lines that we can't cross, and I don't wanna step into that, but I also think it might help us um, be more comfortable with what we have coming for us and do a better job staying within the lane that we are given when uh when we have some of these things come for us. So, um, that's my only question or or request. Again, I think it's sensitive. I don't want us to stray outside of our bounds. I think nobody else here wants us to do that. Um, but if there's a way where we could be a little bit more informed of it, I think it'd be a good thing.
Well, if I could just comment, uh, Mr. Tuckfield, um, you know, one of the things, you've had different legal counsel representing the township for many years. Hopefully, we get longevity in our representation. I'll also be doing litigation on behalf of the township and handling the lawsuits. What I would like to do, a little bit at a disadvantage today because I just started yesterday, but at least be able to review the consent judgments before the meeting, and I can better advise uh the planning commission in terms of what I believe uh you're bound by in the consent judgment and what discretion you have in terms of um a planning commission. So, um, some things, you know, are handled with with consent judgments. It's dealt with at the board level or a legal level. And um, you know, I can't speak to what past council has has put in consent judgments, but uh we have to deal with that. And uh, and past boards have decided, but hopefully, moving forward, we will provide sufficient um instruction for the planning commission moving forward in terms of what what their role is in the consent judgments.
A- and I appreciate that, Mr. Aloya. Obviously, there's, as I I I tried to say, I'm not sure if I said it artfully, but there's the where do, what do we do when it comes in front of us? And then there's also, again, the aspect, and 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 maybe it sounds strange, but when you're used to seeing all the developments and suddenly you see a development gets built, like, where did that come from? It would be nice if we could, if if we could be in the loop somewhere. We don't have the ability to change it. I I get that. I don't wanna change that, but I, if if you're understanding that, I recognize you're you're new in here, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna push it on you the first day. It's just something I'm hoping you can talk to Mr. Box about doing.
I'm, I'm glad for the, I'm happy to to listen to the comment, and I appreciate it, and I understand it, and we'll work together moving forward.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Aloya. Thank you, Mr. Box. Um, the only other thing that I wanna do was, uh, we're all matching tonight, and I just wanna do my job, uh, uh, you know, repping our master plan here. Uh, uh, cultivate McCombe. Uh, Mr. Box will say it, and other people will say it, but uh we're trying to do a good job with the master plan, getting everybody involved. Please visit the website, cultivatecombe.com, so that we can have you a part of the process. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My shirt is still on, Howard.
Yeah, we need to make sure we get a shirt for Mr. Skurdo. You know, so we all look the same. You know, Mr. Aloya, do you want one too? Do you want one of our fancy shirts, or are you comfortable in your suit?
Oh, I I'm good with my suit.
I've got one. I'll wear it next time. Now that I got the memo.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I I'd like to, I'd like to add to uh what Mr. Tuckfield had said. Uh, and maybe uh it can be part of what Mr. Skurdo uh adds to his comments, um, similar uh for the consent judgment, but maybe we can get the wording and and just specifically what we're allowed to do. And then, and we can go and do our uh our our reviews based upon that. It it'll give us time then to really think about what we should be talking about.
Sure. If I could learn some history, every consent judgment so far, since the time I've been here last January a year, and since Josh has been here in March, has been holdovers from prior toss. We have not entered in any consent judgments or been part of any new consent judgments since we've been on board. That helps out. So, it's a good time to look at the process and what we have to do.
There have been a few amendments to consent judgments since I've been here, but we have not entered into any new consent judgments since I've been here. But to your point, I think it it's helpful if you have that background information in a situation like tonight. Now that that, now that's uh, when adopted, uh, that judgment might have been helpful to even have that. I do apologize.
Yeah, is 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 that allowed to have some of the verbiage, you know, like uh just as the example, the loading and unloading areas? It really wasn't loading and loading docks. It talked, or at least what was referenced in Mr. Skurdo, your letter, it was just loading areas and unloading areas. So, it wasn't a dock, but it did indicate uh about the the screening and such. So, if we have the exact wording of the of the um consent judgment, we can, we can uh at least uh anchor our our understanding and our our commitments and and vote really on that consent judgment verbiage.
I think you're definitely saying more than just an awareness.
Yep.
But an understanding.
Sure.
I think that would be appreciated very much by some.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Mr. Provozano? Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, well, to that end, with uh everybody saying about the consent judgment, does it hurt if maybe it's included in the package? The packet? I mean, everybody wants to, maybe we just take a look at it, read it, the language. Does it hurt?
Doesn't, I don't, I don't see a reason, and I can discuss that with Mr. Aloya later this week, but I don't see any reason, especially like the situation tonight, uh, why that safe store consent judgment and the two amendments couldn't have been in.
Uh, unless it's very voluminous, I don't wanna read through three hundred pages of.
No, they are.
Uh, I just want the stuff working.
That's a meat and potato.
Yeah, I want the meat and potatoes. Thank you.
One of Carlisle Wortman's summaries.
As we can do that.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? All right, we now can move to the McCombe Township Board of Trustee liaison, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. The McCombe Township Board has been busy. Uh, we've uh we introduced a law firm last night, um, Aloya, York, Dolan, Thompson, they're jointly working together with us, and uh we also introduced a uh labor attorney named Dan Kelly. Okay, and he's basically gonna help us with labor as needed. Okay. Um, and then we've hired a new HR director. His name is Jeff DeBak. Okay, so uh, there was a quite intense interview session in, it it held very professionally by um the supervisor, the clerk, uh, the treasurer was involved. Uh, trustee Nancy Nevers was, Nevers was involved, and they interviewed the candidates, and um as a result, we have been here tonight, and um, again, welcome aboard then.
Thank you.
Um. So, we now officially have a separate legal and a separate HR, and some that we've been looking forward to getting in many years, so we're very happy. So, that was probably the the big event, okay? And that's all I have.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Oliver, I have a question for you.
No. Okay.
Um. The the sign.
It's too early to plant flowers.
No. I would be asking about corn.
Okay.
Um, the the, the sign that is on the fire station.
Okay.
Round sign.
Yep.
It's white and red. Is that permanent?
I don't think it is.
Okay.
I think uh we can, we can find out, we can ask the chief, but that sign, I don't think it, yes. Cause it don't look really like a I better go look at it, but I I don't think it is.
It doesn't really match with the the high standard.
The decor, yeah. This beautiful facility.
Yeah, a beautiful facility.
It is. It's fantastic. Right? We could, we could uh contact the fire chief and he would answer the beam. I'll try to get that for you right away.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Um.
We're moving to the ZBA liaison, Mr. Tucker Field.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, we have a meeting in two days. It's our first ZBA, since November. We're going to be mimicking the planning commission's process here. So Thursday's going to be our first attempt at it. We're going to try to do that, the live in-person hybrid. So I think everyone's looking forward to that, just like the planning commission. ZBA is ready to be able to operate in the same space. It really does make a difference. We have a couple of width-to-length variances, I believe, that we're looking at. This is with regards to a subdivision that we approved, subject to this variance. I don't remember when it was, I guess it was ago or two months ago, Mr. Box. One of the things that's unrelated specifically to these variances, one of the things that I've always been taught and that I've always read and always been told is once you start to get variance, variance requests too many times for the same item, you need to start looking at how we handle it in the ordinance. And during my time on ZBA, I've been there now almost 10 years. It's actually kind of scary. We've seen a lot of width-to-length ratio variance requests, something I look at in the subdivisions quite often. I don't know if it's something we want to change, but I think it's something we should consider as part of our master plan update. We see a lot of them. I saw them this time, and it just reminded me. I think it's something we need to look into and either decide this is in fact still what we want to do or does it need, does it need a tweak? Mr. Thompson kind of mentioned it earlier when he was referencing this to Mr. Bentley. But I have to say, I always find it confusing the way we calculate width-to-length on a pie-shaped lot. And that's where almost invariably we run into it, is in the corner of these square parcels where someone's putting, you know, they're putting a court, they're putting a round street. I look at it, and I know about what it looks like when it exceeds it, but I can't tell. And it's very difficult for me, even when I go back into the ordinance to determine it. So something I'm hoping we can look into, maybe changing it, maybe simplify it. Mr. Shudo, I'm sure you've seen things like this elsewhere. You might have some ideas. I think this would be helpful in general. So it's a comment I want to make about our agenda items, something moving forward. Other things, just briefly, we have an officer's election this coming Thursday. I don't know what's happening. We might be staying pat. I don't know. But we have that yearly, so that might be a change. And then the last thing, and this speaks to a rollover from our earlier conversation, and it's something that I've been thinking a lot about this year. And I'm trying to put this into place with ZBA, because ZBA is a little more sensitive in this regard, but also with planning commission. And that is to treat my motion making and the way I'm running things to give our legal team and our planning department the best chance of not having to go with the consent judgment if they don't wish to. And to that, to that end, I've really been thinking a lot about it, and I'm hoping that we can work with Mr. Box and Mr. Alaya in ZBA and in planning commission to help us give them the best chance to defend the township's interest in the way we want to and not the way we're forced to, by the way we operate here. So things I'm thinking about for the new year and stuff I'd like to concentrate on, that's through ZBA. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker Field. Planning Department items, Mr. Box.
Thank you. A couple of things. At this time, we have no agenda items, so highly likely there won't be a meeting February 16. We do already have, however, some agenda items for the, I believe it will be March 2 meeting. So there would be one on March 2. As Mr. Tucker Field mentioned, we do have ZBA later this week. I think there's just one item this time. I think there's already four or five for the following month, so that one will actually be a lengthy meeting. We are still moving forward with the master plan, as you guys already mentioned. Cultivate McCombe, please go to the website, stay in touch with the project. And I just wanted to reiterate, you guys are looking good in your shirts. So thanks for representing Cultivate McCombe. So I'll just make sure to wear mine next time. Hopefully, we have one in for Mr. Spataforo by the next meeting. So that's all I have.
All right. Mr. Shudo, did you have anything you'd like to add?
No, Mr. Box is cracking the whip and keeping us busy.
Probably hope what happened. All right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a comment for February 16, no agenda items. And I'd just like to mention that we have a number of items, bylaws, some of the other things that we need to do. Is it possible to, whether it's this next meeting or at another time where there's very little agenda item to tackle some of those items in a, in a, in a meeting that would handle review and discussion of like the bylaws as one item? Maybe the ratios and that issue and pros and cons and what we can do to work through some of those because it's a time where we're all together. And any other time where we're taking care of business, you know, everybody else's application. So this is, this is the time where we can look at that as well as the zoning ordinance and any changes there, the sign ordinance and things of that. And just wondered if that's a possibility. I don't know what everybody else feels about it, but we set aside that time anyway, might as well.
Yeah, we can absolutely, we haven't formally canceled the meeting or anything of that nature. So we can absolutely still meet on the 16th and discuss bylaws and some of the ordinances that we've been working on as well. That's what you guys would like to do.
I'd like it, yeah. To everybody else, for Oliver?
Yeah.
Do you have an idea?
They could, they could, we have stuff, yeah.
Mr. Lola?
Sounds good to me. Let's get to work.
Wouldn't that give you enough time to get us some help on some of our concerns?
Yeah, we'll do what we can. I just need a copy of the bylaws and the ordinances that we're dealing with ahead of time so I can look at them and talk to them with Mr. Shudo and Mr. Box and, you know, understand where we're at, and so we can use it as a work session. It's not a problem.
All right. So the 16th of February will be a work session, but open to the public, though, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, anyone else? No one? All right. Motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion by Mr. Shudo, seconded by Mr. Spataforo to adjourn, Mr. Bentley.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker Field?
Yes.
Mr. Provozano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Meeting is adjourned at 8:19. Everyone, see you none.